Good evening and welcome to the Town Council meeting for September nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We are in the Harvey Hearing Room. It is seven P. M. Roll call, please.
Counsel Honan.
Here.
Counsel Fisillo.
Here.
Counsel Munson.
Here.
Counsel Belcher.
Here.
Counsel DeMarco.
Here.
Counsel Flotkat.
Here.
Counsel Aiello.
Yeah.
Vice President Ruggiero. President Luteri.
Yeah. Ask everyone to please rise. The pledge by Counsel Aiello.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Minutes from the September fifth meeting have been circulated. Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Counsel DeMarco, second by Counsel Belcher. Any discussion, omissions, deletions? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Abstentions, one. And nays, none. Minutes are passed. And the general information and recommendations. We are fortunate to have Allison McNeil and Rafida Ramon from Good Energy with us, going to give us a little presentation. We thank you for taking the time to meet with us and thank you for being here in person. So the floor is yours.
Awesome. Thank you. So. Oh, yeah.
And just put their microphones.
Oh, thanks.
Microphone helps.
So before we start your presentation, we just wanted to thank you for writing this into today's meeting. And like I said, I'm Rafida and this is Allison and I work as the Sustainability Engagement Strategist at Good Energy. And Allison works as a Customer Success Specialist and she will also be your project manager. So today, we're here to kind of provide a brief overview of the Winter Municipal Aggregation Plan and discuss next steps and of course move this along to hopefully open up the public hearing process. So, thank you. And I got my presentation?
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Just kidding.
I wasn't prepared.
Are you going to go over the timeframe a little bit in the presentation? Okay, we're anxious for that. We know it is a process and it takes some time, correct? This came to us when about six months?
Oh.
About.
Back in February.
Back in February.
Presentation back in February, the council voted to move forward with Good Energy for municipal power aggregation, knowing it was going to take a little while. This presentation is part of it, a public hearing is part of it, and you've seen the presentation. And then ultimately, when the plan comes before the council and you approve it, then it goes up to the Department of Public Utilities for final sign-off, which can take some time. So they're up here for just a quick update.
Beautifully said.
Now you just took their whole presentation, I guess.
I'll just share also that there are some exciting things happening at DPU right now. Not all good, but there's new proposed aggregation guidelines, which could potentially speed this up to one hundred and eighty days for an expedited review if the plan adheres to these set guidelines. It's not been voted to finalize yet, but by the time when this plan might hit DPU, we'll see. So just positive outlooks.
Just a note on the room acoustics. The microphone picks up people who are watching on cable TV and Zoom, but the phones.
But the people in the audience, you probably could speak up and that would be helpful. So thank you.
All right.
Thank you. There are no speakers.
Thank you. Can everyone hear me all right?
Yeah, I can hear.
So the next slide, please.
Oh, yeah.
Sorry, I'm sorry. There's no rush.
It's me. Oh, it's me. I apologize.
That's okay.
I apologize. I don't do this.
You. There we go.
All right.
You just page down and go to the next one?
Mm-hmm. That's what we're trying.
Just try to use the slide down, literally slide down to the next one.
Hey.
Thank you. Thank you. So this slide kind of basically shows how this all works. And then you see that in the first graphic, in the first graphic, it shows that Winterkind of does not complete National Grid as a utility. It just selects an electricity supplier that sources electricity that's needed for the entire community. And National Grid still, you know, does most of the delivery stuff, that it delivers electricity, maintains wires and poles and responds to outages. And this program kind of basically offers a new supply program to the community. And Good Energy as a consultant kind of helps the community to adapt to this new electricity supply. So, next slide, please. As you can see, we would like, this is, this map on the right-hand side kind of shows all of the seven communities, including Winter, that we have been using, that we have been managing this summer. And to give a little background, this kind of community aggregation is pretty, it's pretty popular in Massachusetts. And I think the numbers are correct. About a hundred and fifty communities are doing this program. And out of those hundred and fifty, fifty, more than fifty communities are managed by Good Energy alone. So we come with a lot of good experience. So yeah, next slide, please. I'll just share before we move on that all of these that are highlighted here, Town, Fitz Augustus, Hampton, Southford, Milford, and Leamis, are all on the same stage as Winter. So they're still on plan development. Yeah. Yeah. So this is an overview of the plan development process. So like Tony shared, that the Town Council authorized development of this aggregation plan in February, two thousand and twenty-three. And during that same time, Good Energy was selected as consultant. And in summer twenty-two, we developed and worked on this draft plan with the Winter staff. And now in September, two thousand and twenty-three, we're presenting this draft plan. Next slide, please.
Not me.
The cursor is moving, but you need to keep pressing down or.
I am.
He went back. Got to go off one.
Jeez. This is insane.
Thank you. Yeah. So now we're going to give a brief overview about the workings of this plan. Next slide, please. Yeah. So the goals of the Winter Community Electricity are basically categorized into three segments. One is that it kind of helps use bulk purchase power for more competitive rates and the best terms for the community. And it uses and supports more renewable energy. And not only that, it also expands customer choice for electricity supply options. However, future savings cannot be guaranteed because basic service rates cannot, it changes every six months and are not always predictable beforehand. Next slide, please. So the structure of this program is that the Town Manager oversees the entire program and Good Energy kind of manages the interior operations. And they, we also provide regular reports to the staff about what's going on. And we work with the staff to report to the Town Manager if there is any amendments that needs to be done or any changes that needs to be done to the plan. And then we take those information and we bring the Town Council for their final approval. Next. So the program rollout, during program launch, Winter Community Electricity replaces National Grid basic service as the town's moving forward electricity supply. And before the program launches, there is a thirty-day opt-out period for everyone who uses the National Grid so, National Grid basic service supply. But if the town is not interested in the automatic enrollment, they don't necessarily have to opt-in if they don't want to at that specific point of time. They can do it much later if they have another third-party supplier. However, all customers have the right to opt-out of the program at any time with no charge. So National Grid will still continue to handle billing and maintenance. And this entire program does not affect solar net metering or any income this time. Next slide. So these are our, these are our product options. The, so Winter Standard is the default automatic product option that we offer. And the main reason we are, this is basically offered for a windmill situation, not just in terms of economic reasons. Of course, it gives me, it gives you savings, but also for environmental reasons because you get more renewable energy than the standard, the state standard, which is about fifty-nine percent. So it adds up around like ten percent. Then we also offer two additional products, like towns that are more, that are more entwined to savings. They can, and they're not necessarily looking for additional renewable energy, can choose Winter Basic. But towns that are more entwined, that are more inclined towards more renewable energy as opposed to savings, they tend to choose the plus option, which is, which adds up to around a hundred percent renewable energy. And the Winter Standard is actually the most popular since it's the default. And a lot of communities in Massachusetts are using it. In greater Boston, around like towns like cities like Menford, Somerville, Walden, to name a few, they're using it. And yeah, it's going great as far as, as far as we're concerned. So the last slide is that today we're presenting. And the next step is that hopefully this is, this meeting is going to open up a thirty-day public review and we will schedule a public hearing. And the Town Council will amend the plan and go forward towards approving the plan. And after that, the plan will be submitted to the DPU like Tony already spoke about. And once approved, Winter has the option to see proposals for an electricity supply contract. And if the town receives a good proposal that aligns with the goals of the program, the program can be. Thank you. If you have any questions, please, thank you so much.
Thank you so much for your presentation. We appreciate it. And open it up for questions. Anyone, one in the council have any questions? All right, you did such a great, Counsel Aiello. Counsel Aiello.
Just a little bit on the wording of this last slide, if you don't mind. So just so I understand, once, once approved, Winter has the option to see proposals for an electricity supply contract. Does that mean as an alternative to the base rate stuff you had talked about earlier? Or is that sort of a mandatory stuff for us? I wasn't sure about what that means.
That's finding a supplier for you to provide electricity. So these products will still be in there, but it's actually finding someone to supply that and get their rates.
All right. So we, so we must seek proposals.
Of course, of course. And we, yeah, we find only like, you know, dedicated suppliers and we bring them to you to ultimately make the decision, but we make sure we're only bringing people to you who can fulfill this contract.
Thank you. That's clear to me now. Thanks.
And Counsel Munson.
I know I've asked this before, but I just wanted to reiterate, how does Good Energy make money? Are you making a small cutoff of all the aggregate supply? And then, so they're still giving us discount, but you're making part, portion, a portion of that? Is that how it works?
Yes, we have a fee of one dollar per megawatt hour that's baked into the supply cost that for everyone's usage, residential, commercial, and that's true.
And I know that we've asked this when you first made the proposal, but what would you say is the general savings? If we were to do the Winter, if most people did the Winter Standard, the savings from the normal national grid supply, what would you say the discount would be?
So normally, we have a saving about ten percent in comparison to the utilities. But last year, last winter, I think my energy prices were actually quite unstable. But I think we saved for a lot of communities about fifty percent. So the thing is that with Good Energy, we do offer a lot more price stability. It's not always, you know, our prices are not always lower than the utility, but because it's stable for a longer period of time, that kind of makes it a more feasible option in the long run.
So when you write on number one, that, number five, Counsel Aiello asked the same question I was going to ask. You'll bring the suppliers to us.
Yeah.
We make a decision and then that would lock in. You would work out a locked-in long-term agreement so that we could both have stable rates, lower costs.
And more renewable energy.
And more renewable energy. Sounds great.
More candidly, it's like five to ten dollars a bill and that, you know, adds up to something at the end of the year. But giving residents an opportunity even to save a dollar's bill is, you know, it's a big deal.
Ten percent of my bill is a lot more than five dollars.
Counsel Belcher.
Thank you. I just wanted to verify that this is at no cost to the town, correct?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Tony, anything? Nope. Again, thank you for your time. We really appreciate you taking the time out of your busy days to come here and keep us informed and we hope to hear from you soon.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Are you comfortable moving forward to open the public review?
We are.
All righty. Thank you so much. So we'll be in touch with getting that, the plan as well as the materials online so everybody can review them and where it's in at the public comments.
Thank you very much again.
And the Winter Community Electricity website is, I think, updated. So if you want to share that with your residents, the plan is also uploaded there. Some of the important deep details, everything is updated there. So. Yeah. Everything else is updated.
Appreciate it. Thank you again for your time.
Thank you both very much.
Absolutely. Thanks for having us tonight.
You can feel free to stick till the end too, if you want.
Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Press the green button on the wall.
Yeah, the green button on the wall.
You trapped me in here.
I tried. That's what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Take care.
Nice to see you, Tony.
Nice to see you again.
Bye.
All right, we will open a public hearing for the Town Council to vote to transfer forty-nine thousand from group insurance town line to special article line to pay for the replacement of the stairs in the public way connecting Herman Street and Walden Street. Counsel Fisillo.
Yes, so the, we talked about this in our meeting, before this meeting. This is something that, you know, desperately needs to be done, needs to be redone. It needs to, it needs a lot of stuff. We felt it was a good idea. I know that we talked about changing the source from where the money was coming from. That will come later in the meeting. Am I correct in saying that, President Luteri?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll change that, but it was given a positive recommendation during the Finance Committee meeting.
All right, thank you. Any comments from the public? Yes.
Hi, I am Neil Chase McGroney, one thirty-two Herman Street. I live right next to the stairs. And I'm just, I showed Richard several videos, ten-second videos of activity that goes on in those stairs, public urination, drinking, et cetera. I do contact the police or sometimes CASA if I see suspicious stuff. I'm just hoping that there's some kind of low lighting that goes on there. I don't know what your plans are.
Yes, I'll ask either Steve or Tony.
Yeah, Steve and I talked about it. I don't know.
We did talk.
For our family, we talked about some, adding some lighting there.
Oh, awesome. Good.
It'd have to be some sort of solar power.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, that's fine.
So we're looking into that as well.
Anything else?
No, I just.
And again, we were, we had, we had said months and months ago that we were looking into public and private, public ways and trying to make them more accessible, where we could do that and to try to prioritize in this, with the change in the service to the bus route, this became an obvious first choice. We looked into it. Steve did a great job looking into it. It is, those stairs have been there for probably a hundred years. And they definitely need for safety reasons and such, they need to be addressed.
And one other thing, I have no problem clearing out my sixty-five feet in front of my house, but I cannot at seventy-six clear the stairs during the winter is.
Oh, we thought that was part of the deal that you were going through. Okay, we will take care of that for you.
All right, thank you. I'm all for it.
Thank you.
Yeah, one happy camp with you.
Thank you. It's one we need. Counsel Munson.
Thank you. I was there recently and I did check out the stairs and they are in rough shape. But I noticed that the water came down from the houses and dribbled all the way down the walkway. And I was just curious if maybe, Scal, or Tony, do you know if, how far down we're going to be working on? Because there's a kind of like some, some possible tripping hazards beyond the steps. It seems like some unlevel asphalt that could be tripping hazards.
The scope of the work that we advertised for quotes included replacement of the stairs and then sixty feet of the asphalt walkway, all the way down to the connection with.
Shore Street.
Shore Street.
Right. Excellent. And then lastly, I did get a call from one of the constituents. They were curious about ADA accessibility. I don't know, obviously it's stairs, so there's no ramp going to be included in that package, but as far as ADA and having railings and et cetera, do they, will it need that?
It will include no aluminum rails across the stairs. It, no, I mean, there's not, the room is not there for ADA, an ADA ramp. I mean, the, the height would require multiple course ramp. We just don't have it there. But we did have that discussion, Tony and myself, and I don't know if you want to speak more to it, Tony, or not, but.
No, yeah, I mean, we don't, dollar-wise, we're not really triggering it, but even if we were to call on it, we just have to ask for variance from it, that's all. We'd have to go to the architectural access board and ask for variance. But I mean, there's just not the space to put it there. It's not an issue getting it, but yeah, that would be the issue, so. But yeah, I mean, we're, it's going to be safe, but it won't be certainly wheelchair accessible, I'm sure. No, that it never was, right?
Anyone else? Counsel DeMarco and then Counsel Aiello.
So this is a public hearing, so there's no amendments to any motions to be made here.
There'd be a motion made in old business.
Yeah. I wanted to talk about the Highlands down to Revia slash Crest Ave.
This is the only thing we could talk in this public hearing is about this project. There's just a public hearing. Public comment, somebody can make a comment about anything else, but in this public hearing, we're only limited to the scope of the public hearing.
So it can be discussed in old business?
No.
Or new business?
It could be discussed from a town member and, and public comment. Or you could bring it up at the end of the meeting when we give everybody a chance to discuss.
Well, we're not going to vote on.
We're voting on this, this evening.
Okay, so I could make an amendment to that motion?
You could.
Yeah.
Yeah, absolutely.
That's what I was asking. Okay.
Counsel Aiello.
So two items related to that. One is just for Director Keller. So if we wanted to put in some solar lighting, I assume the budget probably needs to be increased a little bit. Do you have a sense of that? It's an important public way because of the bus stop now and there's going to be a lot of people, especially when the clocks change, going up and down that thing in, in the dark. So I would be ample with the amount.
It's, it's not a public way. It's, it's private property, so we would have to, have to figure out where to put the lighting. Probably at the, at the Herman Street end of it where it is, fully private, public rather.
But, but to the extent we can get some lighting there, let's assume there's four stanchions of light. Just, do you have a sense of budgetary need for that?
There's different options. I'm going to, I'm going to suspect, you know, eight, you know, could be as much as, as eight thousand dollars for, for adequate solar fixture.
For each one?
Potentially, but I don't know that you need more than one, you know, at least at one end and one at the other, you know.
So maybe two, two. So that's an idea. And then the second is directed to the Town Manager. We had also had asked the MBT to try to provide a bus shelter at the bus stop. Any from the discussion mail?
We can have to go about it and I haven't heard, they still deciding where they're going to go, it's in committee in their end and they have a whole bunch that they're wanting to dispatch out, but they have not finalized the list yet, so.
Okay.
That was what I was told, so.
All right, thank you. No further questions.
Okay. Anyone else on the public hearing? And this will be coming up again in old business. Seeing none, we will close the public hearing. Public comment. Come one, come all. Yes.
I, Carina Kempabasso, Precinct Three and Mothers Out Front. On behalf of Mothers Out Front, I want to thank the Council and Town Manager Marino for moving forward on the Community Aggregation Plan. I'm sorry I was late for the presentation, but I do have it. And so I, we're very excited about that and I just wanted to thank everyone for doing that. Also, since this is a positive, saying good things, we had a sinkhole in front of our house just a few days ago. And the DPW came out like so fast to fix that, to put a plate over it. And I just wanted to say how, what great service it was. So thank you very much.
It's nice to hear good comments. Thank you. Public comment, anyone? Mr. Schmidt.
Yeah. Bill Schmidt, Precinct Five. Want to talk a little bit about the middle school site. Unfortunately, I was not here a couple of weeks ago when you made your presentation. So all I kind of got was what I read in the paper. And in thinking about the middle school site and I sent you, you folks a letter, I hope you would either consider the old Regione Center Initiative, which, which in looking at it, I thought it was really terrific. And in my own perspective, if I was developing the property, I would consider putting a fifty-five-plus community condos in the section down at the corner of Walden and Pauline. I think that would be more revenue to the town. I think it would offer housing for our seniors. I think it would be a good idea. So from my perspective, I hope you would either issue two RFPs, one based on the proposal that President Luteri did, as well as one on kind of that adaptation or of the Regione Center Initiative, which was done six years ago. Or at least do an RFP that gives you a number of options as opposed to drawing an RFP that's too narrow, that kind of restricts what you have the ability to look at, because I think that's a one-time site. I know I've talked about this before. We all know that revenue is a significant problem for town government in this town because we do not have an industrial commercial tax base that's primarily property tax. So my concern is revenue piece, but also I think that initiative developed a number of years ago by citizens would offer the town the skating rink and the community center, the type of things I think the town needs. And we wouldn't really know and be dependent upon other groups and organizations coming in to the town to maybe use the site as you develop. So, but I, I applaud the fact that President Luteri's been moving forward to try to do something with that site because it's been vacant for so long, but I think you should kind of consider more than one option.
And I'll just talk briefly. We've considered a bunch of options over the last seven, almost eight years now. And I know, and I think Counsel Aiello was on that committee that presented the, the plan back about six years ago. And that was a private plan that the town was going to have to pay for, which, you know, we had given ample time and, and the financing never seemed to come back. You know, that would be a multimillion-dollar project, probably fifteen, twenty, twenty-five, depending on what it was. If at the time it was just a rink up there on that side. And then again, there's always been the motto in Winter, never a day without hockey, so it would be built up there. The school would be demolished, the rink would be built, and then after the rink was done, then. then you would potentially demolish the existing rink that's a beloved fixture in the town. And then we would develop that into whatever, you know, whatever we chose to do. That was a plan that was brought forward. It was a really good plan. I can remember the night that they presented it here. It just never really got off the ground with financing. It was a private, you know, town project more than a private project. But always good to get good information and we will choose a direction to go, but thank you for your comments. Yes, Mr. Duras.
Don Duras, precinct six, take us a step back to dovetail what Karina said. First of all, thank you to you and mothers out front for all the work you're doing. And thank you to the council for considering and developing that plan that was presented tonight along with good energy. It's incredibly important that we join, I think, you know, fifty-two communities existing that do this. And we were one of seven to launch the study this summer. So sometimes it's important for people to get correct information about the things that were discussed tonight, whether or not there's any additional cost to the town to hand this question. Do people have choice in provider? Do they have an opportunity to opt out for whatever reason? All of those things were covered. I thought the presentation was excellent tonight. And it's a wonderful opportunity for the town to save money and do the right thing for its future. So thank you to all that were involved to happen, get this to happen tonight and looking forward to seeing it move forward.
Thank you. Any other, yes, Mr. Tastaneri.
Max Tastaneri, precinct one. I've been out and about, um, meeting a lot of folks, and one thing that's come up over this weekend for them and myself is the overwhelming amount of noise generated by Suffolk Downs concerts. Some people were really disturbed, some people were not as disturbed, but it's worth mentioning and asking the question of the council and of the town if there's an engagement plan to reach out to our neighbors in Revere, Boston, and developer H Y M to see what is available to us for sound mitigation or anything really in terms of what's gonna happen at that Suffolk Downs side.
Yeah, we have no plan, as of now, we have not reached out, but we are looking into the possibility. I mean, there has been, obviously there were numerous calls, um, you know, and then different explanations, right? It was the base, it's because it was the base and it was the this. I know if we had a party like that here, they would be shut down in probably ten minutes, but, you know, there were a lot of different comments, different points of view, right? But, you know, the fact that it kind of took everybody by surprise, which was the major problem, right? You're always like to be asked if you're gonna be inconvenienced at least, have, you know, instead of asking for forgiveness after, ask for approval before. But we will look into that, and I know we have reached out to Revere, but we haven't talked really about mitigation or anything like that, but.
Yeah, yeah, I'm working with Attorney Simpala, we're reaching out to find out if it's not even, might not even be revered, cause that site's got half in Boston.
Half in Boston, half in Revere.
Where the actual venue is, might be Boston, so we're looking into that. We're gonna draft the letter, so we're, I think, I'm gonna, I'm gonna have to work, but. We are working on that based on the feedback we get over the weekend.
Sure.
Tony, how's that, how's that work out? Cause I know they had a vote. I, I mean, originally the plan was, you know, for E, for East Boston and Revere, and then it ended up being just Revere on the vote for the proposal of land for the project that went on at Suffolk Downs. East Boston voted no.
Right.
Revere voted yes.
But again, we're still, as far as the, the music venue or the whole, I mean, I guess I don't.
And the whole, I, I, I thought it was the whole project.
The project, but not the music part of it.
Okay.
I mean, you're talking more about the.
We're digging into the music part of it to get, not only the operator, but.
Okay.
The city and who issued the permits and all that, so.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Yeah, just to follow that up.
Sure.
I just was, if you're going to be initiating communication with the city of Boston and Revere, I just would like to be able to create some kind of boundaries, some kind of guidelines, some standards for them to, cause we kind of need to know, like we were saying, we don't need to be surprised. And I don't, I'm not trying to be a Karen, you know, like who poo the fun. I just need, I think as a town, we should know how many concerts are happening, when they're happening, if there's gonna be diversions of the roads, if there's gonna be, you know, what the, and I think that, like, they could probably do something with the music itself to redirect it, so it's going inward, not outward. I mean, I was over on Morton Street, it was like I was getting a free concert over, you know, it was just too much. So I think that for the, you know, for the peace of mind of the town, we should just create some standards for the, you know.
Again, to be cautious, not first time into this, uh, this isn't the first community that's issued, so. It's gonna, it's gonna, you know, where it's not in our town, it's gonna, you know, take a little time and, you know, we have to, what we can ask for, you know, you don't, you know, we have to use the court, you know, use the courts, use our legal rights and as a separate community and, you know, part of the city of Boston and try to get it done early. But I just, I don't wanna, it's not gonna be fixed like that, but it's gonna be a little bit of a process, so.
Any further public comments? Yes. Again, name and precinct, once again, I'm sorry. Name and precinct, once again, just for the.
Gail Tracy Groin, precinct one. I did call some number in Revere, because I didn't think it was a nine-one-one issue and left a message saying that it wasn't music, it was just noise. And it was blowing me out of my house with all the windows closed. And I never heard anything back from anybody, but maybe that's what we need to do, individual, you know, citizens calling.
I think some of that newer music might just be noise too, so. Not really sure. We need some more classical old time music.
A little Sinatra.
Big bands?
Yes.
But I do think they got multiple, you know, several thousand calls. It wasn't, you, you know, it was a lot of people that were disturbed and just taken aback by it. Any other public comments? Marcy?
Marcy Hamilton, precinct two. First of all, I'd like to get, say thank you to Mr. Keller and his men for helping out with the, with the pipe and the flap on Gerber Stone and Pleasant Street. It seems to, we haven't had heavy, heavy rain, but my yard hasn't been flooded and I'm very glad and I live on Tideston. And I know there's more work to be done on the water side, on the ocean side that needs to be fixed, so I'm appreciative of that. And I think, um, I just wanted to say to all of you, first of all, I appreciate the work you do, because the time you put in and the meetings that you attend is greatly appreciated, the work is hard and it's, it's not a thankless job, but it is a time-consuming job and that's all we have is time, right? So, so I appreciate the time that you spend on this, on town issues. And that being said, there's a lot of, um, talk about sites and, and, and movement. And I hope the communication between your, your precincts, the people get up there again. I was out at the farmer's market, a great venue where people get together. I was out at the, um, down where Mothers in Rain, um, down at the Chambers gathering. And I think we need to have a little bit more of that. And I know in October, there's gonna be a trunk or treat at the community school. So I invite you all to go up there and just to kind of take a look at your demographic and, and take a look at the people in our community, cause we don't really see a lot of our community. We're on our, we're Zooming and we're busy. You know, we're all busy, busy parents and, and family members and working people. But if you look at our demographic, it has changed since we, I grew up. And it's a great community and I would like the council to understand who they're serving, and I'm sure you do in your own precincts. But maybe we can have a, um, I was thinking it would be great to have a, um, block parties again. And maybe in twenty twenty-four, have like a no fee block party. And neighbors get out again to see each other and to talk and communicate and see what the needs, what they're looking for, who their neighbors are. We are a community that's very dense. We are putting condos in and twos to threes and threes to fours, but we really don't know our, our neighbors as much as we used to. So, um, I'd like to have that conversation moving forward as we discuss, um, the, the property that you're developing and to see who actually would benefit from, um, uh, property at the middle school, old middle school, high school. I, of course, would love to have a community center, a small art space, theater spot, and of course a rink, and a pool perhaps. But I don't have a million, bazillion bucks. In Beverly, they just, I heard, you know, in Beverly, they are accepting old shoes to build a playground to, it's, it's, I'm gonna find more information about that, but we need one of those thermostats that say, oh, we're almost there to build this, you know, whatever it is we wanna build, a community, not like a boys' and girls' club or a Y, a winter center that will house CASA, the Board of Health, maybe even a, um, townwide daycare that would serve just town employees. And maybe we could keep our teachers and our DPW and our, and our police and fire here at a, at a minimal cost. I don't know, just a thought, I, you know, I have a lot of thoughts, but thank you for all that you do.
I know Director Keller isn't used to all this praise. He's gonna wanna become a ten.
I'd like to get ten more people. He's got a great, beautiful facility and I'd like to see if we can get ten more guys on there, cause winter is coming.
Any other, anybody on Zoom?
No.
Any other public comments? All right, we will move on from public comment and we will go to correspondence. Denise.
Uh, the only one I had was, uh, Mr. Schmidt, which I was gonna mention, but he has taken care of that for me. So that was all I received.
Thank you. And, um, I will, I, I will say on the Firehouse website, we have received numerous correspondence, what we're, which we're addressing, which we're corresponding back to and giving answers and posting questions and answers on the website. So again, I encourage you to go to winthropfirestation.com for more information. Finance Committee. Consul Fisillo.
Finance Committee, yeah, sorry. I was pulling up the agenda. So the Finance Committee met earlier today and we discussed two items. We had the stairway proposal, which was given a positive recommendation. And we also had a proposal come forward for the renewal of the contract of Sullivan and Powers, both of which came out of committee with positive recommendations.
Thank you, and we'll discuss those more in detail in Old Business. Public Health and Safety?
Thank you. Due to extensive emergency work in Lemonster and Andover because of the storm, no one from National Grid was able to meet with the Public Safety Committee when we met on September twelfth. However, I had spoken with Bob Colter of National Grid and explained our concerns regarding the projects they were proposing on Pauline and Fremont Streets. He agreed to forego the new pole on Pauline Street and make the connection to the new building on Fremont Street underground from an existing pole on Pauline Street. And he had no problem ensuring the infrared treatment to the new pavement. The committee reviewed the new work request for the underground connection from Pauline Street to Fremont Street building with a manhole installed on Fremont Street and the previous work request to install underground conduits on Fremont Street and voted unanimously to have a positive going forward. In addition, Councilor Hodman reported that she had provided the town manager with the name of an environmentally safer pesticide that could be requested from our pest control company.
Thank you. All right, School Department report. I was unable to make the school committee meeting because of a Firehouse Committee meeting, but I will report, um, from what I know from the meeting. And our interim assistant superintendent Laurie, Laurie Galvin gave a get, very good presentation on the opening of schools. All seemed to go well and it seems, you know, you're two weeks into it and it just feels like they've been there for months now. So all is going well on that. Marcy took my thunder on the Gorman Fort Banks PTO, um, doing the trunk or treat and, no, that's okay. But it will be, I encourage people to reach out to the Gorman PTO. They do a wonderful job. This will be the third year, I believe, of this, and it's held behind the ATC School. It's a great event and it's, it's, it's a very safe way for children to be able to walk through, get candy. And it's basically people back up their cars and, and give candy out of the trunks and other people that don't have a car, that don't have space. They can use tables and such, but I encourage you to reach out for more information to the Gorman Fort Banks PTO. Also, there was discussion on Laurie Galvin, who is the interim assistant superintendent and contractual arrangements to become the permanent assistant superintendent. And Laurie has done an incredible job for the schools in her years at Winthrop Public Schools, and we're very appreciative of that and more information to follow on that. And that is it for the School Department report. We will move to the Town Manager Report.
Uh, thank you, Consul President. Um, most of the work like you has been on, uh, you know, fire station and, uh, you know, RFPs and RPIs for the, um, middle school site, um, my time for the last couple of weeks. But one of the other things we're working on with Rachel Kelly is, uh, making sure we get our, um, shared and open, uh, street applications in for the MESS, uh, into the state. First one is due on October first, um, and the second one, shared streets, is due by October thirty-first. So, uh, we'll be ready with, uh, working with Director Keller and Rachel to get, uh, the application in for October first. And, um, then we'll have one ready for October thirty-first as well, so, uh, that's been, uh, the bulk of it. I, as I said before, Director Keller will be covering it this weekend. I will be away in New York City, uh, starting on Thursday. I'll be back on Sunday afternoon. Uh, Director Keller will be acting as town manager, send a memo out, uh, to my stead. And to kind of talk about community events a little bit, uh, we brought up earlier. We just got the application from the Chamber for the tree lighting ceremony that'll be happening in French Square, you know, the annual Thanksgiving weekend, so excited about that as well. I will not be away this year, so I'm happy to be. So I'm certainly open to any questions from the council members.
Consul Munson.
Can you, um, explain the shared streets? Is that part of the, uh, project sidewalk where everything is kind of reviewed? And is that a separate entire?
It's a state program for mentor sidewalks and street infrastructure, things like that. One of the things we're looking at, um, I've been working with actually, uh, Julie Wallace as well, uh, talked to her today, and Rachel Kelly, but we're looking at, there's been a lot of demand for the, um, you know, the solar powered flashing, uh, crosswa, um, lights at the crosswalks. You go, press the button, the lights flash, so it attracts people to stop, or stay for the cross at the crosswalks. Uh, we're gonna put in for four or five of those and then a few other things that we're working with Director Keller on. You know, and the, the other program that's due on October first, we're going to, uh, look to do some street improvements and sidewalk improvements, cause that's not really meant for design, but we can get some construction projects done with that.
As far as the, uh, how is the, I, I know that there's markings for the concrete bollards on the Pleasant Street bend or by Court Road intersection?
Yeah.
How is that doing?
Uh, they, I think they cut the holes. They're looking, you know, we've had some trees that were planted this week, so they're just fitting that into the schedule, but it's ten inch steel pipe, we filled with concrete, you know, down four feet in the ground, so that will provide the safety, meet MASTD standards and.
It's amazing, and how far is that gonna go?
Uh, just, we took my map out on the corner. I don't see, what is it, twenty, thirty feet or something in that range?
Yeah, it's, uh, actually it's closer to a hundred feet overall.
Okay.
Limit to limit.
And then the, are, are the flashing caution signs, the, alike, the, already going up?
Uh, we'll be receiving the flashing lights on, uh, signs on Friday. Uh, we'll aim to get those installed next week as well.
Making progress on, on the safety of the town, thank you.
Consul Belcher.
Thank you. Uh, Consul Munson kind of took my question. I was gonna ask about what projects we were putting in for the grants, but.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Consul Ayala.
Two things, the, the flashing signs you're talking about, the speeding signs, that was last year's, um, or is this different?
No, this is different. This is similar to the ones up at the other corner, the curve ahead signs.
So I know that Tony, yeah, we have eight, uh, that can, flashing, uh, you're going too fast signs that can be deployed at one forty-five.
There are already, the location's been picked, uh, we're just waiting for the contractor to come, contract's been picked. They're just, uh, waiting for them to put on the schedule and we'll get it done.
And, and put the initial installation and then we can move around.
Later, we've got the initial launch out there.
So that was last year's shared streets.
Correct.
Ramp, that, that stuff is just coming in now and then there's a.
A new application.
I just also wanna commend Tony, there's a lot of things going on. There's, um, the redesign of the station, of the, the main street as you're coming off the Belle Isle Bridge over to Pleasant Street and beyond towards McGee's Corner. That would be to redefine the entrance to Winthrop and a lot of the pedestrian and mobility issues, a million curb cuts, et cetera. He's got a wide variety of other things going. For those who are interested, um, Tony's been working with the TSAC Committee to try to get a comprehensive, um, overview and tracking of all of the transportation safety improvements, whether it's sidewalks, crosswalks, flashing signs, et cetera. There's one at eight tomorrow. It won't be perfect, but I think it's, we're starting to sort of be able to allow a citizen to sort of plug into a TSAC meeting and have a very, for those of us who are geeks about this stuff, you'll see all the detail you need to see on it. So thanks, Tony, to making that forum a good forum. need to see on it, so thanks, Tony, to making that forum a good forum there and Director Cal as well.
Anybody else?
One other thing I'd like to mention too, and you hit on it briefly, but talking about the Fire Station, is I really like to drive, you know, people want information, we wanna be driving, everybody drive, everybody have a website, there's a link on the Town Manager blog, there's a link on the website, but there's a lot of good information, we've even write down the tax impacts and everything else, I don't think, you know, I know we've gotten a lot of hits on it, but a lot of people still probably haven't gotten the information or, you know, to make an educated decision on, you know, Election Day, but really want, but that website was well done by the, you know, Firehouse Building Committee, so.
Thank you. It has had about almost fifteen hundred unique hits so far, which is good, and there was a postcard that went out to everyone in the town just showing what the website is, so yeah, they have been putting in a lot of work and just, again, just trying to inform voters of the reality. Yes, Council Flockhart.
Thank you, I would like to commend the committee, I think they've been doing an excellent job, the information really is getting out, and the information they're putting together is really solid.
Thank you. Council Munson.
I had the opportunity to meet with Chief Wiley recently, and I too concur with your sentiments about the website and the Firehouse Committee, and they're doing a great job, and slowly the information's getting out. One thing that I feel is though hasn't been really expressed as well as, I'd like to just share now, when I was speaking to Chief Wiley, there was a certain, like, urgency, and it wasn't because he's trying to like meet deadlines or what have you, it's just protection of his employees that he's most concerned with, and so I implore people to really consider this strongly, because this is something where people, there's already two firemen right now that are fighting cancer, and every day we don't do something about this firehouse situation, they're being exposed to more toxic fumes and more carcinogens that could affect them. This isn't something that we should do, this is something we need to do, and this is not a perfect proposal, but a good proposal, I just implore people to really consider this seriously.
Thank you. I will say one thing on that, and, you know, we have, the Firehouse Building Committee has meetings every Monday night, and the attendance is, is low, but I think, you know, the information is getting out, but there was a comment made last night, and the gentleman is actually here tonight, but it was a comment that just struck home a lot, because we have been talking a lot about the location and the cost and the timeframe and the turn radius and the middle school and such, and the business owners, and we've been talking about the town's, you know, not only legal but moral obligation to the business owners, and we have been doing that in earnest, but the question was, we haven't heard a lot about the moral obligation we have to our firefighters, and the, the accommodations that they have and the issues that they face and the standards that we just do not even, not even, don't meet, but don't even come close to meeting, so I do implore people to go to the website, take a look at the video that shows a little tour of the current firehouses to see what type of conditions we're offering. You know, the fact that the, and it was mentioned last night, the fact that the building is a hundred and thirty-nine years old in and of itself doesn't mean it's no good, I mean, you know, U.S. Capitol is probably older than that, right? So it's not the fact that it's old, it's just the condition that it's in and the safety has is that it possesses, so thank you, Council Munson, for that. Is that it? Town Manager, thank you.
Thank you.
CDICR?
They have not made yet, they'll need to get them out.
Okay, Old Business, National Grid. Is there a motion for? Is this necessarily a motion? They're asking for permission?
Hit the button.
I don't see a motion per se.
Petition.
I have a petition.
Motion just to accept National Grid petition with the infrared and the pole.
Right, so.
Which will do.
We'll read the petition into the record, unless someone objects. We have a petition to the City Council, which is the town of Winthrop, Mass. Mass Electric Company, DBA, National Grid, and Verizon, New England, request permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along with, along and across from the following public way, Fremont Street, National Grid, to install one J O pole on Fremont Street, beginning at a point approximately thirty feet southeast of the center line of the intersection of Pauline Street and Fremont Street. Install a pole on sidewalk at the intersection of Pauline Street and Fremont Street. Location approximately shown on the plan attached, whereas appraised after the due notice and hearing as provided by law, it to be granted for a location for the permission to erect and maintain poles and wires together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here within marked Fremont Street, Winthrop, Massachusetts, number three zero four nine eight zero two two, June eighth, twenty twenty-three. Also for permission to lay and maintain underground lateral cables and wires and above and intersecting public ways for the purpose of making connections on such poles and buildings as each of said petitioners may desire for distributing purposes, your position, your petitioner agrees to reserve space for one crossarm and at a suitable point on each of said poles for the fire police telephone and telegraph signals, wires, belongings to the municipality, and used by extensively, exclusively for the municipal purposes from National Grid. We discussed this at the last meeting. Director Cal, do you have anything on this before I go to? Yes.
Yeah, this is the old.
Right, the old petition that they filed with us.
Right, this is not accurate.
You have the new petition there?
I can amend this to say.
Right, well that's, right, this is what they're presenting, and then we're gonna amend it to.
Okay, because they, they submitted a new work order.
Yes, and that's why I was asking Council, Director Cal.
We rejected that first plan.
Mm-hmm.
And they went back, their engineering department, and they took our comments and they reengineered strictly underground, uh, no new poles, which Council Flockhart had, which I reviewed and, you know, I'm certainly happy with it, but I don't have the full language of it.
Mm-hmm. So the language as amended, which we've discussed, and we discussed at the last meeting, and they did their due diligence and came back with the right, and we thank Council Flockhart and Director for bringing that up and, and kind of holding their feet to the fire and making them do what we wanted to do, so we would be voting on this and granting this petition as amended. And if Council Flockhart would like to update anything else on that amendment?
Well, I would like to amend that the, there will be no pole, new pole.
No poles.
On Pauline Street, and everything that will be done will be done underground, there will be a new manhole cover, hole on Fremont Street. That's the new plan.
Right, and we are happy and we are content with those plans, with the concessions that they've made, they've served the town well, and we thank them for that.
And the restoration procedure is what we asked for as well.
And did they give us a time structure as to when they would want to do this?
I think they originally had a time structure. Unfortunately.
It's not a long process, it's a relatively short process.
Yeah, yeah, they're gonna be working on it soon because.
Before the winter comes.
The Fremont Street Building.
All right, so we're asking, or they are asking for approval of the position, of the petition as amended. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes have it, thank you. Town Council vote to appoint an outside auditor. Council Fisillo.
Yes, the motion is that the Town Council vote to award the contract of an outside auditor of the accounts of the town to Powers and Sullivan LLC, certified public accountants, or take any other action thereto.
Okay, now this came out of committee with a positive recommendation, I know there was much discussion in committee, one of the items and why we had put this off is, you know, Powers and Sullivan has been very good to the town of Winthrop and, but we've had some issues with the timeliness of the reports, and we've addressed that with Powers and Sullivan, and some of the fault lies within our town too, and making sure we have all the documentation needed in a timely manner. Over the past several years, we've been receiving reports, basically a calendar year after. The good thing is, the reports, you know, multiple years ago, we, they would come back with twelve, fourteen, sixteen different issues that the town needed to address, and this year's report, which is from fiscal twenty-two, there were two issues that we need to address, so that's a good thing, but making sure we have these in a timely manner is very important. Pricewise, they treat us very well, we've basically had the same contract for years and years with a two and a quarter percent escalator year after year, so financially, they've been very good to the town, we just wanna make sure that we can get these in a timely manner. There aren't a lot of companies out there that are doing this work, to put this re-out to bid now, we would probably end up with the same company paying more money, but we did wanna be able to hold their feet to a fire and, and make sure they treat us like a, a first-rate town and not put us to the side and delay, and we've promised to make sure that we have documentation in a timely manner, so I, I am happy with the positive recommendation from the subcommittee. Any discussion on this? Council Munson.
Do you mind revealing some of the other possible accountants that were considered? And.
We did not put it out to bid.
You didn't put, I know that, but were there others that you had in mind that you knew that would probably come in high?
No, I think, well, the Town Manager could speak to it, but I think there are a handful of people, of firms, I don't know their names, there are a handful of firms, and my impression is every bid is going to come in higher than this, substantially higher.
Yeah, there's only a couple, I have to pull up the names, I mean, the last three towns I've worked in, it's only Powers and Sullivan.
Is that right?
Yeah, they're, they're a good firm, they do a good job, it's really, to Jim's point, you know, we've gotta get our stuff in order and get the documentation sooner so we can get those reports quicker, and then they'll promise to work hard for us, but I mean, I just, if you, we're getting that pricing point, you know, if it's a long term, or if you were to put it out to bid, I guarantee you're coming substantially higher.
He seemed to have an intrinsic knowledge of our numbers and our, you know, our state of finances, so it seemed like he was a great fit and understands us well, but there's, so you're saying we should not put it out to bid just because we're scared we're gonna end up spending more?
I'm comfortable with Powers and Sullivan, I think for one more year they'll be fine, we can certainly talk about it again next year, it's a one-year contract, so I'd be comfortable with it this year.
Me too.
Council Hon.
I do have some concern about using the same auditor year after year after year, and there's, there can be, as an auditor myself, there can be complacency if you're looking at the same things over and over again, year after year. I'd like maybe some assurance that they're at least using different auditors when they're coming in, different people, if we could get records of that.
Thank you. Any other questions? Council Ayala.
Is it, is it possible to, to rec that we do this one-year extension with a mandate, with a requirement that it be put out to bid next year?
I, I wouldn't bind another council, I guess, I mean, that would be my recommendation, I mean, you certainly could do that, but you know, that's binding a future council that may opt to wanna go with it, I mean, that's one of the things to consider, you don't ever wanna bind, you know, somebody else.
Can you bring this issue to us in January?
Sure. Absolutely, yeah.
First meeting?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
That would be a new council.
It will be.
I'll still be here.
Me too. You will too. I'm with him.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of retaining Powers and Sullivan, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no, the ayes, one, one no, one no, eight to one. Question's passed. All right. Let's get to more. Town Council to discuss vote on ballot questions, this is more, we've already agreed on these, but we have to, let's see here, that's fine. Genders are getting too long. All right, so back, several months ago, we had the Ordinance Review Committee come back with recommendations, which they came back with several recommendations, we voted on, the council ultimately votes on the, which recommendations to bring forward to the town to be voted on, the council did vote on these four recommendations, which need to go to ballot. The text of the motions, we have already agreed upon, but I will read them again, there are, recommendation number two, so that, first of all, this is the Town Council vote to place on the November seventh, twenty twenty-three, local election ballot, the following questions in reference to the Winthrop Charter amendments offered by the Ordinance Review Committee and approved by the Town Council. So recommendation number two, which was approved, would be, should the abandonment clause in section two one D be changed from missing more than half of the meetings over a one-year period to either three consecutive regularly scheduled meetings of the full council, or two, by failing to appear at fifty percent of regularly scheduled meetings over the full, of the full council over a three-month period? So that recommendation number two was voted on and passed by the council, and that's the way the question would read on the ballot. Recommendation five A, should the charter be amended to add a provision that would allow for the recall of an elected official through a citizen initiative? That was passed by the council. Recommendation number six, should the charter be amended to include that if there is a dispute between this charter and the council rules, the charter is binding? And that was passed by this council. And the last question that was recommended by the council from the ORC was, should the charter, section seven dash eight, be amended, changing the time for which the Town Council may adopt the budget from a forty-five day, from forty-five day following the date that the proposed budget was received, to not less than fifteen days prior to the start of the fiscal year? And that was also voted on by the council, so these are just, this is a vote to allow Town Clerk to go forward and put these questions on the ballot. Any discussion on this? Council Munson.
I love that we're actually getting the exact verbiage, I feel as though the clarity is good, and I look forward to seeing the exact verbiage of the Firehouse exclusion as well, because we kept yet to see that, and we're actually not writing it ourselves, we're having someone else write that?
That's next on the agenda.
Okay, excellent.
And any other questions? Council Belcher.
Thank you. Will the town send out information to the voters about what each of these mean?
Yes, well, I don't know if we're gonna.
Yeah, like a summary sheet.
Yeah, we're doing a summary sheet of each question.
I think specifically for the recall one, I know that was one we debated a lot within the council to clarify what that means and how it's done, so I'd like to make sure we get that information to the voters.
Anything else? Council Ayala.
The other one is the budget calendar, people need to be aware that if they wanna participate, they really need to go into the preliminary budget discussions with the Finance Committee, because there's gonna be limited time to sort of weigh in once that budget is presented to the council, so I think that's important.
Well, this is actually giving us more time, so what's been done in the past is that you have to do it forty-five days after it's submitted, so it's officially not submitted until the beginning of March or whatever it is. Now, we could receive the budget much earlier and have way more time, because we don't have to vote on it until the middle of June, so that's why this is such a special.
But if it's presented late, doesn't it give us, if the budget comes to us late and we're up against a deadline, less time.
We are, if, with this, but now we could receive the budget early and have more time, because it was, once we received the budget in the past, we only had forty-five days to pass it. So to get towards that middle of June, which is where we all agree we wanna vote on it, we would have to have, we wouldn't have it until, what is it, May first officially, so now we could get it in February, March and go back into, you know, into.
Okay.
Yeah. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Oh, yeah, roll call, I'm sorry, roll call.
Council Hon.
Aye.
Council Fisillo.
Yes.
Council Munson.
Yes.
Council Belcher.
Yes.
Council DeMarco.
Aye.
Council Flockhart.
Yes.
Council Ayala.
Yes.
President Ruggiero. President Luteri.
Aye.
Thank you.
Motion is passed. Denise, am I packing? I don't know if I have the.
Right in. Do you have it?
I have it now. So this is the motion again, that the Town Council passed unanimously, not the motion, but the, the thought. So in this, this is the way the question will read for the proposed Firehouse, and this, we went over, you know. this, we went over, you know, I think Consul Munson said something earlier about nothing's ever perfect or whatever, and, you know, we're very limited into what we can say by the state on a debt exclusion.
Council President, I don't, I don't see this on the agenda.
There were a couple of versions of the agenda, but we're not.
Discuss, vote, ballot questions.
Okay.
All right. So the motion, that the Winthrop Town Council directs for the administration of an election on November seventh, twenty-twenty-three, language below, debt exclusion ballot question for a proposed fire station. Shall the town of Winthrop be allowed to exempt from the provisions of Proposition Two-and-a-Half, so-called, the amounts required to pay for bonds issued in order to pay the cost of acquiring property and construction of a new fire station building to be located at two-ten to two-twenty-four Winthrop Street, Winthrop, including the payment of costs related to studying, planning, and designing the project, demolishing existing buildings, equipping, equipping and furnishing the building, making site improvements, and all other costs incidental and related thereto? So that is the language that came, and the town manager can confirm where that language came from, please.
It came from bond council, it's specific to national laws, you know, certain things have to be in there, and that's the language that has to go on, and, you know, the motion that you, due to approve, to put that ballot question on, you can certainly be a little more elaborate than that, and that's the one that requires the two-thirds votes of the council, but that ballot question itself that goes up to the public has to have that language in.
And similar to the O R C recommendations, what Consul Munson just mentioned, there will be a summary of this in, you know, layman's terms, so to speak, that people can understand exactly what they're voting for. You see questions in the past where like a yes vote is really a no vote, and this and that, so it's very important to understand the language, and we will have absolute clarification on it. Discussion on this. Consul Munson, did you have a question?
Yes, I just needed to know whether the words so-called were necessary.
Yes, absolutely.
It seems so superfluous and so unnecessary, but it just adds to the kind of confusion of it.
This is pretty much verbatim what you'll see in other cities and towns?
The word bonds, and some people just don't know what a bond is.
That's why I love the summary, yeah, trust me, we're back and forth the hours with bond council on this, because similar questions are brought up by the council president and others, so, but yeah, no, that's the language that has to be in there, otherwise, when we do the project, we will be able to go out and borrow the money if we don't have that, because bond council has to sign off.
And when you borrow on a project like this, or any scope like this, you're not going to, it's not going to be one bond at the beginning, you're going to go out and borrow thirty-eight million dollars or whatever it is, you're going to go out and borrow incrementally, and that's why, you know, and that's, hence the tax, you don't see a tax increase in that first year, it would be, you know, little by little by little, as you need the money, so at the end of the project, if you didn't need to borrow the whole amount of money that's approved, then you don't have to borrow it.
And that's why the education piece that the fire, you know, building committee is putting out, it's so important to, you know, educate the public as to what they're voting on, you know, and then have the summary piece as well.
And not to be super picky, but isn't Proposition Two-and-a-Half supposed to be, it's a proper noun with a capital P, and two-and-a-half being in kind of numerics, not spelled out, simply because it is something that people will recognize as opposed to, you know, Proposition Two, I'm not trying to, I'm from rules and ordinance to me, so this is what we do.
I, I'm not going to go against bond council, because they have to sign off on the long term.
So they've actually said those words, needs to spell that.
Absolutely, we do all this way, and then.
Consul Belcher.
Thank you. Is, is there any way to indicate that, I know the title of the question says debt exclusion, but having it say two-and-a-half?
That was one of the first questions I had, and the town manager will tell you that we had some in-depth conversations about that, that I think, and, you know, we have the title, there's very little they would give and take on it, we just want to be as transparent as possible, and we're educating people on the debt exclusion, and then it doesn't get to say debt exclusion, but it will exactly explain that in a, in a summary page, but.
Okay, and then another question is, should we or should we not indicate that some of this goes to the eminent domain takings and relocation?
Well, it says in there about acquisition.
Property acquisition.
Okay.
Again, that's.
And other costs relative thereto, yes.
People want to see what it's for.
This is basically to include everything from soup to nuts, as they say.
Right, right.
Consul Munson.
So, I, I'm not sure if I missed the conversation earlier, but I believe this is going out to the public in the newspaper along with the summaries, and if not, I recommend it.
Yeah.
We could do that, yes.
The summaries too, and the descriptions.
Yep, absolutely.
And that's where, you know, this is where the whole education piece comes, you really want to let people be informed when they vote, if they vote yes, if they vote no, but you want them to be informed.
Another question I had was, so at fifty percent, one vote over fifty percent means this goes forward, we would get the debt exclusion underway.
Correct.
All right, so, and it doesn't matter how many people turn out, so if there's a hundred people that show up on a rainy cold day.
Fifty-one.
All right.
Consul Munson, you're on the ballot, so they'll be well over.
I don't think that's why I'd come.
So, yes, and, and again, just to clarify, if it is one vote below fifty percent, the council cannot move forward at this time with this project. Any other questions? Denise, roll call, please.
Consul Honan?
Aye.
Consul Fusillo?
Yes.
Consul Munson?
Aye.
Consul Belcher?
Yes.
Consul DeMarco?
Yes.
Consul Flockhart?
Aye.
Consul Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero?
We're going to.
President Luteri?
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. All right, Consul Fusillo.
Yes, let me just pull up that motion real quick. This is the motion from earlier that we talked about in the, the, whatever, it was the public hearing, reads as follows, I move that the Town Council vote to transfer forty-nine thousand from the group insurance town line to a new special article line to pay for the replacement of the stairs in the public way connecting Herman Street and Walden Street, or take any other action thereto. I know we discussed, once again, amending where this comes from.
So there's a motion coming out of finance, it does not need a second, is there an, so, again, this is to build the stairs, to rebuild the stairs going from Herman down to Short Street leading towards Walden Street. We've discussed it in earnest, we know that there's a need, I think there's at least one amendment that needs to be made, so there could potentially, from what I've, from what I've heard tonight, there could be two amendments made. One would be from where the money's be, coming from, first of all, we discussed, the finance committee discussed taking the money from capital stabilization instead of from group insurance. The original thought was the group insurance line, there was money when we did the budget that was going to be taken from the group insurance line, we decided not to take it because we didn't think the need was there, so we knew that, you know, potential amount of money would be there for this. But coming from finance, it was thought that it would be better to look at a different location to take the funds from, so I'm assuming there's going to be a motion to amend the words group insurance town line to capitalization line. Is there an amendment of that? There's an amendment by Consul Fusillo, it's seconded by Consul Belcher, so the amendment is on the table first. Consul DeMarco.
I was going to make an amendment.
Well, we just have to talk about this amendment first.
Well, it, it includes the capitalization, capitalization fund. My motion would be for the Town Council to vote to transfer a hundred thousand dollars from the capitalization fund to pay for the replacement of the stairs in the public way connecting Herman Street and Walden Street, as well as the Quincy path connecting Quincy Ave and Revere Street.
Okay, well, you could, you could make that motion, we, we're on this motion right now, so the motion is to change the verbiage, change the funding source from group insurance line to capital stabilization line. That motion has been made and seconded, further discussion on that motion? Consul Munson.
I applaud the creativity of where you're getting the money to get this project done, I just wonder if there are going to be people, including our fellow counselor, DeMarco, who are looking for their paths and their precincts to be resolved, and can capitalize, can this source of income supply the necessary means and money for several of these?
We have, we have recognized fifty public ways, and we said that this was going to be a long process, and we would start by prioritizing which paths and which ways were needed and which order. Obviously, funding capabilities, just like sidewalks, there's tens of miles of sidewalks that we would like to replace every year, I'm sure the D P W director would agree, but we only have a certain amount of funds every year to do that, and we prioritize, and we do it in a timely manner. And if something comes up ahead of schedule, if there's, you know, just like the lead line project, we'd love to replace all the lead lines in one year, but if something comes up, some infrastructure work, we might change the order of priority to make sure while the road's open, we're doing it, and just like this, no, we do not, I mean, the simple answer to your question is no, we don't have unlimited funds to fix every public way, but we have recognized that there is a need to address these public ways, and we're trying to be as expeditious as possible, and this, by all accounts, seemed to be the place to start. So, no, the answer to your question is no, there is not an unlimited source of funds, but I would encourage a committee that, you know, we've talked about this now for several months, to start going through the list, it took us a while to get a full, complete list, and to start prioritizing and to see which, you know, what needs to be done, and the funds that need to be allotted to that, but as of now, we're talking about this one item.
I think that the source is useful, because free cash is certified, and it usually goes right to the capitalized stabilization fund.
Either way, and if there's money left in the.
It makes good sense to me, I just think that the prioritization of these is going to become an issue, and so if there's a process to prioritize, that would be great, so that people could have their input and so forth.
All right, so we're still on the amendment, which is to change the funding source. Any other discussions on the amendment? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote.
Consul Honan?
Aye.
Consul Fusillo?
Yes.
Consul Munson?
Aye.
Consul Belcher?
Yes.
Consul DeMarco?
Aye.
Consul Flockhart?
Aye.
Consul Ayello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
Yes. Right, so there's a motion to change that, was, now, we did hear discussion earlier about lighting, it was very important to a lot of people, now, we, we had heard it could be up to sixteen, we had heard up to eight thousand, potentially eight thousand a poll and potentially two polls. Is that something that anyone would want to amend the amount of this? Consul Ayello would like to make a motion to amend the amount.
I'd like to make it the dollar amount before I say sixteen thousand, I put you on the spot, do you want to rethink the number?
Not really rethinking, I mean, it's, it's an estimate, you know, so if you want an exact number, you have to put it up.
No, I'm not looking for an exact number, I want to make sure there's enough room that if it comes in at eighteen, you don't have any real pad.
Right.
So why don't we call it eighteen, and then if you don't use it, you put it back into the fund, right? So, I, I'd like to make an amendment to increase the amount.
Right, so, Consul Ayello would like to make an amendment to this, to change the, the dollar amount from forty-nine thousand to sixty-seven thousand.
For the purposes of adding.
For the purposes of adding lighting to the project.
Second.
There's a second by Consul Belcher, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, we will, Consul Munson.
Sorry, I don't need to be verbose, I just wanted to make sure that the process was clear, we are putting this out to bid, this is not being done in-house, and that's why the price is a little bit more than normal, correct?
Correct, we're not doing this in-house, the stairs have already been put out to bid, we have had bids backed, so we know what the exact pricing is, anything done by a municipality, you're paying prevailing wages, always, you know, more money. Any further discussion on the amendment by Consul Ayello? Seeing none, I'll ask for a roll call vote, please.
Consul Honan?
Aye.
Consul Fusillo?
Yes.
Consul Munson?
Aye.
Consul Belcher?
Yes.
Consul DeMarco?
Aye.
Consul Flockhart?
Aye.
Consul Ayello?
Aye.
Vice President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
Aye. Okay, so, now we have a motion that the Town Council vote to transfer sixty-seven thousand dollars from the capital stabilization fund to a new special article line to pay replacement of stairs in the public way connecting Herman Street to Walden Street, to Short Street, actually, and Walden Street, or take any other action relative thereto. So that is a motion as amended, and just for clarification, the current balance in capital stabilization is two million, one-hundred-sixty-three-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. After this, the amount would be two million, ninety-six-thousand, three-hundred-and-thirty-one dollars. Again, for transparency, any discussion on the motion as amended, or would anyone like to make a further motion? Consul DeMarco.
So first off, I just want to say, we're lucky to live in a town that has such a rich history, and we have these staircases because they were connected to the narrow-gauge railroad, and people were able to walk down the hills and get to these, these facilities. You know, they're gone now, but those stairs are still there, and they're a unique part of our history. Revere Street and Crest Ave, next to the center of Winthrop, is our second-biggest business district, in my opinion, in town, okay? A lot of people use these stairs, I'm sure Director Calla will tell you, they're in rough shape, the ones I'm talking about. So, what I would like to amend the motion to read is the Town Council vote to transfer a hundred-and-sixteen-thousand dollars to pay for the replacement of the stairs in the public way connecting Herman Street and Walden Street, as well as the stairs connecting Quincy Ave and Revere Street through the Quincy path.
Right, there's an amendment, is there a second to the amendment?
Second.
Seconded by Consul Flockhart. Now it's open for discussion, Consul Ayello.
I am highly sympathetic about the whole issue of crosswalks, one-hundred percent, and also about the importance of that. I would prefer that the council consider, we are really going to be starting the capital planning cycle again at the beginning of November, in which case, we're going to be allocating money to these set of assets, sidewalks, crosswalks, street paving, water sewer, et cetera. Let us participate, let us go through that rationally, we'll look at what we can put for all of these pathways, and then work out a prioritization scheme, and then see how many we can fund in next year's fiscal budget, but do it in an open, transparent, debated process about what goes first, what goes second, what goes third. This one, I think, is a very unusual circumstance, because we are taking transit passengers, and we're, we're moving them in a different direction, and they really do need to not be in harm's way from an action that we have been the advocate for, so, that would be my proposal, if you felt that was adequate, you might withdraw, but.
No, 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 I'm not, I'm not, well, I'm, it's, I'm not taking.
We don't know what the cost is either.
I'm adding, I'm adding to it.
Yeah.
And that, and that's the key point right here, we don't have any cost estimates of that potential project, and we do have cost estimates of this, well, now, we did add the lighting, but the major project, we did go out and get estimates for it, and it is important to prioritize, and they are all important, there's fifty of them, and, and I'm sure every one is important to whoever, you know, lives next to it, and that's the priority, but I think it is important that we, you know, the fact that we've brought these to light, so to speak, and the fact that we're taking action on them, and already have begun one of the projects, I think, is, is showing the town that we're trying to do the right thing, and trying to protect the assets that we have, and the rich history that we do have, but I do think it's important to do it in a prudent way, and prioritize it correctly, and to look at a capital plan, and to, similar to sidewalks, to see how we can prioritize them and how we can pay for them. Consul Flockhart?
Yeah, I would like to point out that those two staircases are quite different, and I don't think it's reasonable to take the bid from one and extrapolate it to the other, I think there would be considerably more money to fix the Quincy steps, so.
Thank you, Consul Belcher.
Thank you. I just want to make a note that this has been sent to the Public Works Subcommittee, we haven't had a chance to meet, and I think that we should be diligent about coming up with a scheme to assess them and prioritize them again, like it's been mentioned, to include in capital improvements and, and things like that. things like that.
Okay, so this is, we're going to take a vote on the amendment made by Counsel DiMarco. A roll call, please.
Counsel Honan?
No.
Counsel Fisillo?
No.
Counsel Munson?
Aye.
Counsel Belcher?
No.
Counsel DiMarco?
Yes.
Counsel Flackot?
No.
Counsel Aiello?
No.
Vice President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
No. Okay, so now back to the, not the original motion, but the motion as amended, which, again, town council vote to transfer sixty-seven thousand dollars from capital stabilization line to a new special article line to pay the replacement of stairs in public way connecting Herman Street and Walden Street or taking any other action relative there, too. And we would amend, and one further amendment I would add to this is to, to pay for the replacement of the stairs in the public way, along with adequate lighting for that stair. So I would like to add the word lighting. So there's a motion made by Counsel Belcher to do that. There's a second by Counsel Fisillo. Any discussion on that motion? Seeing done, a quick roll call, please.
Counsel Honan?
Aye.
Counsel Fisillo?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Aye.
Counsel Belcher?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Aye.
Counsel Flackot?
Aye.
Counsel Aiello?
Yes.
Vice President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
Yes. So, any discussion on the motion, on the motion as amended several times? Seeing none, one last roll call, please.
Counsel Honan?
Aye.
Counsel Fisillo?
Yes.
Counsel Munson?
Aye.
Counsel Belcher?
Yes.
Counsel DiMarco?
Aye.
Counsel Flackot?
Aye.
Counsel Aiello?
The great divide, yes.
President Ruggiero? President Luteri?
Oh, jeez.
Yes. All right, new business. RFP Middle School. Now, I'm, I'm going to take the hit for this. I've, I've sent out, town manager and I have worked on an RFP, which I sent out last night to everybody, which is twenty-seven pages long, along with what I sent today, which I think some people didn't get, and this was my technology skills from last night, was an RFI. The RFI is really what we want to do first, which would be a request for information, which would be more just, it, it's a, it's not a less real policy. It's a, it's a way to do things, but it's a, it's a way that we will get impact from companies to see if they have an interest in doing something like this. It's more of an informal setting where they would be able to respond to it, answer questions, get us into a different frame, you know? I'm sure we have a gazillion questions on it. And then, if that passed muster, then we would put out an RFP for a project. So I don't want to go into it now because I don't think everybody's had a chance to read the RFI, because I know Counsel, did you get it? No, you didn't get it. So I, I think a lot of people did not get it, and that, and I'm not sure if that's because I sent it from my Gmail instead of the town email, because I was working on it on a Google Drive, and my technology skills are not what they should be. But Counsel Aiello?
Well, first of all, I, I do like generally the idea of an RFI as a first step much better than just going into RFP for almost any complicated project, so I think...
Well, one of the things we had discussed, we had put out an RFI originally for a project, and we kind of thought, well, does that suffice? And it doesn't really suffice for this.
The second thing is, I just want to correct for the record that the so-called Rosione Plan, which we should probably change to the Citizens Plan, I don't know why it's on the town website like that, but that derived from the fact that when we got a big Mass Works grant from the Commonwealth to think about the middle school redevelopment, the town manager at the time made a determination that the hockey rink and parking of the hockey rink shall not be included in master plan thinking, which I've been involved in a million master plans. It's like a fatal flaw to sort of just take that rigid a view of things. So a bunch of us who participated in that, and I've got to say, I was, I was really impressed. This is two thousand seventeen-ish, eighteen, if I recall. We must have had two hundred and fifty people cycle through meetings after meetings after meetings, and it was really remarkable. We had architects who would put up blocks of what a hockey rink looked like, or what a gym looked like, or whatever, how much space, how much parking was required. Same thing with housing or a hotel or whatever. There were, it was, it was a really inclusive process that draw, drawed out a lot of folks. And I was impressed by the variety of interest of what people wanted in that site. And I never came away with the sense that all those people who showed up, meeting after meeting after meeting, were committed to a hundred percent sports facility. That just sort of never even got anywhere on the radar screen. The plan that few of us developed, that's the private plan, so-called private plan, was submitted to hopefully stir some debate. We got some good debate on it. That plan was never assessed for its economic viability. None of the plans were assessed for its economic viability. And in fact, the plan that was contemplated in the president's remarks about trying to replicate a sports complex from another community, that hasn't been tested economically. So on none of them do we know whether or not they work in the market or whether they need to be, whether they need to be subsidized, right? We also have been looking strictly at the notion of capital construction costs and paying those off. But these facilities, again, no matter what kind of blended use, if you wanted an arts and culture center, if you wanted something else, you wanted some fifty-five-plus housing, which I would root for, can you make it seventy? Just kidding. There's a lot of good ideas out there, and we really ought to have a debate about it. I don't think that debates should go on forever, but I think we need to have a series of community forums. I think we need to make sure, it's not the biggest site in the world. That's sort of the first thing. We all think it's a giant site. Once you think about buildings and parking, it really begins to shrink on you. One of the things, I think we're in a slightly better place, one of the restrictions of why nothing moved the last time is, and I'm not going to say this as a negative, Jack Dowd knew a lot of the history of the sites that were there, and they were conveyed in odd ways. And we couldn't get the town manager at the time, I'm not going to name names, this is a while back, you can figure that out, to get outside council to work with a surveyor to confirm exactly what the restrictions were in each site, how to cure those, whether it's through zoning or whether it's through legislative action, et cetera. None of that support happened for any of the sites, and so the, the, the project, all of the options just sort of just died there. I think we need to be realistic about the market. I think we need to be careful. I think we ought to encourage debate. I think we ought to, in the RFI process, be clear about the things we want to make sure outcome. So as an example, if somebody comes in and is the winning bidder and then gets halfway into it and says, geez, I got problems, how do we make sure that the leverage is on our side, not on their side, right? And there are mechanisms for that, right? Let's imagine that you've got about fifty million dollars worth of construction to happen. The failure to perform, they come and say, oh, I got problems I didn't anticipate. Not so much a bond guarantee, but a letter of credit is something that would reside with the town and that we would immediately pull, get rid of developer, and figure out how to get a replacement then. You end up with a lot of leverage around certain mechanisms. We should think about the commercial outcomes that we want to see. We want to think about what happens during the operation and maintenance phase, what kind of obligations we want to put onto the public sector, private sector, what kind of obligations we want to retain for ourselves, how we want to derisk the project for ourselves, and how do we make sure we end up that this, whatever we build there, is serving the broad needs of the community. So I think an RFI is a, a good idea. I think it needs to be informed, however, with a broader palette of possibilities so we can get people to react to that. And people say, oh, jeez, there's no market for a hotel, there's too many up on Route One, or there's no market for housing, or the, the interest rates are too high, or there's no this or that. I think that would be helpful because none of us, none of us here are economic development specialists, none of us here are big real estate developers, and I think we need as much input as we can, doing an RFI, but doing it by presenting to them a broader palette of possible mixes and see how they react to it, and then moving forward in RFP is the right way to do it, in my experience.
Any other questions? Yes, Counsel DiMarco?
I'm glad, I'm glad Counsel Aiello brought up Jack Dowd, actually, because what you're talking about, what he's passionate about is Article ninety-seven, disposition of land. And, you know, Ingleside Park was meant to be a part of the community, to be parkland. That's what it is. A lot of people would even argue that even putting the skate park in there was a violation of Article ninety-seven. Yeah, so, yeah, I just, I just wanted to point that out and say that I have absolutely no intention of doing anything that would take away parkland from Winthrop. I think we need more of it, actually. The other thing is, I wanted to remind everybody that the town council took a vote, I think it was six years ago, that the hockey rink is off the table. We're always going to have a hockey rink.
Didn't say the hockey rink was off the table. Said there will never be a day without a rink, meaning that if we could find a better rink and get it built, at that point, you could take down the existing rink and do something else with it, maybe a park expansion or something like that.
I, you know, I agree, I agree with that. I just, I wouldn't want the rink privatized because we are very lucky, because Revere is an MDC rink, all the rinks in the area are MDC. Ninety percent of our rink is used by Winthrop residents, and I want to keep it that way, so...
Any other discussion on this? This will be back on the agenda at our next meeting. All right, Counsel Munson?
Thank you, Counsel President. I, I applaud the efforts of, of our Council President by moving the conversation forward and getting this going. And it is a plan that he developed, that is checking a lot of boxes, a lot of, a lot of things that we need as a town. But I also feel as though that an openness to other ideas is critical, and ultimately we are trying to serve the most people in Winthrop possible. So while a sports complex checks a lot of boxes, could a mixed-use senior housing community center upgraded rink serve more Winthrop residents better? Possibly. Ultimately, though, I don't think we should be mired in just debate and chat and, and more forums. We ultimately need to get real plans on the table and real developers that are willing to develop with real numbers that we can decide upon. So I think we have a little, that process you just spoke of sounds absolutely brilliant. I love that you were involved with so many people that could give their input, and I would like to see some of those ideas brought back to the forefront and actually get some developers that would be willing to put some ideas, proposals on the table. Thank you very much, Coach.
All right, and that is remaining on the agenda. Next on New Business, flag proclamation. I'm going to pass the gavel to Counsel Belcher for a second and ask to be recognized for a proclamation. Thank you. I would read this, a proclamation recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month, whereas October is traditionally Italian, Italian-American Heritage Month, which celebrates the distinguished culture contribution of American with Italian lineage, whereas the town of Winthrop hereby proclaims October as Italian-American Heritage and Cultural Month for all Americans to learn more about the history of Italian-Americans and to observe this month with appropriate programs and activities, whereas the town of Winthrop recognizes the importance of celebrating and celebrating and supporting Italian-American heritage and culture and acknowledges that we must continue to work towards full equity for all members of our community, regardless of their race or ethnicity. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the Winthrop Town Council extends its support in the celebration of October as Italian-American Heritage and Cultural Month and encourages our residents to join in commemoration and recognition of the many contributions of our Italian heritage neighbors, friends, and family members. We call upon all citizens to celebrate the diversity and strength of our community. Further be it proclaimed that in recognition of October as being Italian Heritage and Culture Month, the town council authorizes the town administration to fly the Italian flag October second through October thirteenth, twenty twenty-three. There's a motion made.
There's a motion made by President Luteri for the proclamation recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month. Any discussion on the motion? Counsel DiMarco?
I fully support this, obviously, Italian Heritage Month. But I also wanted to amend the motion to recognize Jews in Winthrop during this time of Rosh Hashanah and Yom Kippur. So I wanted to make an amendment to the motion to also recognize our Jewish citizens during the month of September.
There's an amendment on the floor.
You can't make amendment to a proclamation, you have to make a separate proclamation.
Well, I, I kind of did, but it doesn't...
You'd have to do a proclamation. The way the, the flag policy was written by the council, you can't amend it.
I wasn't looking to raise a flag, it was just...
No, 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 I'm not saying that it's a wrong, it's a bad, I'm not saying it's a bad motion, I'm just saying it can't be done in this format.
Okay.
Any further discussion on the proclamation? Counsel Aiello?
Okay, I just didn't want to skip ahead of him. So I'm a little bit out of my depth here, but I would also know, I believe, that the Commonwealth of Massachusetts celebrates Indigenous Peoples' Day on the second Monday of the month, traditionally. I would want to make sure that we are celebrating that and flying the appropriate flag on that day to recognize the formal state celebration of that paired with this.
And this is a proclamation, you would have to propose a proclamation for that.
I can't amend it.
You can't amend the proclamation.
So can I create a parallel proclamation and ask that they be considered together?
I don't think you can. I don't know. I, I mean, I don't want to say you can't if you can, but I think you would have to do it at a subsequent meeting.
He may know something.
You were saying next meeting is October second.
I think we have time.
You could, you could put a proclamation in.
All right. And I send that to the town clerk ahead of, ahead of time?
Yes.
Okay, that'd be fine.
Counsel Munson?
I think it's a wonderful celebration of Italian heritage. I just think it opens up a, a, you know, a, a decision, an ethical question, whether all the different ethnicities represented in this town should be also celebrated. But I also think that with Italian Heritage Month being that as part of the way we wrote the actual flag policy, there is only a fifteen-day policy, a fifteen-day flag flying maximum.
Correct.
So of those three fifteen days...
That's why we added from two to the thirteen. That's why the proclamation says only flown the second to the thirteen.
Right, so I'm saying that there's, you know, ample opportunity to celebrate other ethnicities and heritages.
I think that was the whole policy, you know, to celebrate all ethnicities. And it just needs a proclamation to be done.
Yeah.
So I have a technical question. We can only fly one flag at a time on the poll?
Correct. On that, but you'd have...
So can I file an amendment to the proclamation?
You can amend the proclamation.
So in other words, this would block out being able to fly the Indigenous Peoples' Flag Day on Indigenous Peoples' Day, which is right in the middle of that, and this year is October ninth.
But I believe if I, if I may, the actual following month celebrates the whole month for the Indigenous people, not just a day.
Okay, I'm just saying it's official Indigenous Peoples' Day in Massachusetts on October ninth, and we wouldn't be able to fly a flag.
That's what you're saying. The proclamation would have to be revised to allow for that...
No, you would have to make a new proclamation in October to fly it at a different time during the month.
You could revise the proclamation as...
No.
Proclamation stand, is there written?
Perhaps we can resubmit both on October second?
I, I would not be resubmitting this. I would ask for it to be voted tonight.
I think we would just end up celebrating the whole month, like the way we're doing here for the Indigenous people in November, which is the actual month that it's supposed to be, so...
Any further discussion on this proclamation as it stands? All right, so can we take a roll call vote on accepting the proclamation recognizing October as Italian Heritage Month?
Counsel Honan?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilor Visillo.
Yes.
Councilman Munson.
Aye.
Councilor Belcher?
Yes.
Councilor DeMarco.
Absolutely.
Councilor Flacco.
Aye.
Councilor Aiello.
As a proud son of Italian America, of Italian heritage, with Italian parents, I'm proud of my heritage, I am going to vote no.
Vice President Righero, President Luteri.
Yes, motion passes, thank you. Appointment. Town Council President Luteri, please accept, please accept, the town council accept the appointment made by Town Council President Luteri to appoint Brian Perrin to the Board of Assessors. Motion being made, any discussion on the motion? Seeing none, and I know that there was an application put in, I don't know, did that get out to everyone?
Yes, it did.
Okay. Any discussion, seeing none? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Always know, the ayes have it. Congratulations, Brian, welcome back.
We missed them.
Yeah. Great. Public comment. Mr. Schmidt.
Couple of questions regarding ballot questions. One is, I got, I'm sure this mail-in, I think, probably went townwide.
It did.
And, and I went on the website, learned information. Is this being paid for by the town, or how is this paid for, this mail-in?
That is paid by, by the town. It's not paid by, if it was paid by an organization, it would say committee, yes, committee or whatever.
The question I have, are we spending town resources to promote one side?
We're not promoting a side, we're just trying to get information out, just as the, you know, when we look at the finance committee, building committees, and we're getting eight, nine, 10 people trying to disseminate information.
So, but we're not, we're not, are we, are we putting out what the positive is and also the reasons for voting against it? Or are we just putting out information saying that this should be done?
We're not saying it should, we're putting out information for the project that's going on the ballot. We're not telling people to vote yes or to vote no, we're just wanting to vote informed. That's what we said from the beginning.
Okay, so I'm, because it doesn't say that this is paid for by the town, I think it should.
Okay.
I think folk, folk should know that this, the cost of whether the website or the mailings are being paid for. Personally, I think new fire station is necessary, but I think people should know that this is being paid for by the town when this comes in the mail. So I think, I think that should be disclosed, because I didn't know that. I didn't know it was coming from a particular committee or who. Other than, and similarly, a question, I know when ballot, the Secretary of State, when there are state ballot questions, they have people saying, you know, why it should be voted yes, why it should be voted no. When we have these four questions from the charter, is there an explanation in terms of the language what it would mean if they passed and what it would mean if they don't pass?
Yes.
Do people have both, kind of both sides?
Yeah, that makes sense.
It's just my concern that people understand who's promoting it or how it's being promoted, what the pluses and minuses are. Thank you.
Kind of like when you fill out a ballot question, and it has, if you vote yes, if you vote no, yeah.
Okay, that's a good ques, good point. Mr. Ross.
John Ross, Precinct 6. Hey, it's 9 o'clock, so we'll make this fast.
Okay.
As another person of proud Italian heritage on my father's side, and a whole mix of stuff on my mother's side, I'm, I'm struck by the conversation that you all just had, because it made me think about when I lived in Melrose for eight years. I served on the Human Rights Commission in Melrose. And one of the events that we sponsored, and it's probably something I should bring up with the CDFCR, but we sponsored what we called an international welcome dinner. And it was probably the best attended event we had in Melrose all year long. And the intent was to celebrate all of the communities in town. So it was a hot look. And even though Melrose has fantastic restaurants, in my opinion, it was the best night of eating in Melrose all year long. So something to consider, that we might do something like that, kind of like Marcy was talking about, doing some fun events in town. So I'm happy to share more with the council about, you know, what we did in Melrose. Fantastic event, huge participation, consistently, hundreds of people show up every year. So it's something I'll recommend. The other thing I'll just do is, I won't take the time to read it, but back to the point that Councilman Munson was making earlier about what Chief Wiley had talked about in terms of the urgency around the firehouse and protecting the safety of his firefighters. When he did the presentation at the Senior Center a few weeks back, showing the video of walking through the firehouses and stuff, I spoke with him afterwards, and he handed me this little card that he might have handed some of you all, but it, it basically talks about the increased risk that firefighters face of various cancers. And there's a list of about eight cancers on here. And that's just what they face as a natural course of doing their jobs. So if you take that, and we fully let that in and appreciate the risk that they take every time they step out the door on our behalf, and then you add to that what they're facing with the conditions of the firehouses right now that add on to that risk, I think everybody just needs to let in the urgency of solving for the firehouse ASAP. And we're certainly all committed to doing that. And I thank everybody's efforts. I know it's been a heavy lift to consider all of the options and put forth, you know, all of the best options. And we'll continue to do that, to, Councilor Aiello points, thank you, everybody. It's a lot of good hard work.
Thank you for your comments. Yes.
Permal, Precinct 2. Every now and then, I kind of look at our maintenance plans and stuff in town and see how, you know, how we can improve our municipal buildings. So recently, I've been looking into the E.B. Newton. With that is, I know when for kids only, the, it was around 97,000 in revenues being brought in. Once they left, it dropped down to about 57,000. Looking at the building, been in it, looked around it, I know there's, there's some upkeep that is in the lease agreements with each tenant. And from my understanding, from what I saw, is that almost every lease in there, except for one, originally started in around 2011, 2012, and they automatically re-need. So some of the, when I started looking at some of the prices, I said, what if all those been for-profit, nonprofit? And we also have town departments in there. If we took the for-profit, nonprofit, and put them out in any other building out here, is that the price that they would be paying? And if you look at the square footage and everything, really isn't. So my understanding is all these lease agreements and everything are going to be negotiated now. I believe Caso has a new one for 2023. But I, I think when we look at the maintenance of the building and the cost for the utilities, water, electric, and everything, all that is included in the lease. I personally would love to have, you know, a business in there and have all my utilities included for some of the prices that are there for these businesses. Hopefully during the negotiations, we take fair market value for the for-profit and nonprofits and what they would be paying outside of that building. I know we want to try and retain some of them, because they're huge benefits to the town. But where we're looking to ensure our properties will be maintained, we're taking in the money, we got to pay how much for the clock tower? I mean, some of that money really should have come from a budget that was included for the maintenance of the property. So I just ask that, I know it's more not really the council to look at, maybe town manager with the, I believe Glenn, I can't remember his last name, who manages it now. If during those negotiations, you really look at fair market value.
Thank you. Zoom, Denise? All right, public relations. There are still committee members needed for several committees. Please contact the town clerk for more information, 617-846-1852. September 28th is Recovery Month Remembrance. October 17th, which will be our Fall Forum, which will be held at the Senior Center. We, we need to hold two public forums each year, one in the spring, which is on finance, one in the fall, which is on delivery of services. That will be held again on October 17th. I will be hosting a coffee hour tomorrow night at the Lyceum Room at the E.B. Newton to talk to any residents, answer any questions I can on proposed middle school site and proposed new firehouse. I encourage people to go at 6 o'clock at the E.B. Newton. And Denise?
I did miss two people on Zoom that do have a question or public comment. Julia Wallace, can you unmute, please?
Cannot hear you, Julia. Not well, very low. That might be on our side.
I know.
Try it now? There we go. Much better.
All right. Thank you, sorry, I really had the best intentions to be there in person. Got dressed and brushed my hair and everything, but yeah. Zoom just makes this so easy, so thank you for making this available. I know it's late, so I'm going to keep my comments short, we already tried to move on, but I just wanted to comment about the middle school R and P, or RFI, or whatever we're going to decide to do here. And I know Jim and I have talked about this, I want to definitely give huge props for bringing this forth and finally having some momentum. Thank you, President Luteri, for making this a priority. But I do want to echo Councilor Aiello's concerns that what we see here doesn't feel totally, that is economically. I know Jimmy said, you've talked to people that have interest in a building like this, in the same, I know economic development is a key piece here, but it's a little concerning to see that housing is labeled as a misfit when we're in the midst of a massive housing crisis, not just locally or regionally, but statewide. So to miss that opportunity to meet some of that need. But also, I just, I'm concerned that we end up with this bespoke building that is made for really one particular use and really relying on a certain provider to operate and lease it. And then they move on, that business model doesn't work, then we're just kind of on the hook for a building that has very limited use. And I'm also very concerned about the public value, that we have this private entity leasing it for tournaments, which sounds really fun, but what if they're going to market for tournaments? What if they decide to pull out? Do we have public access? And is sports really the one biggie that we want to do with this really last chess piece of public land in our town? I did participate in some of those meetings back in, like, 2018, even 2014 and 15, way back before I even lived here, when we were sort of deciding what is going to happen with this, with this building. And I don't remember it being all sports all the time. So it just, it sends a really strong message that this is our biggest priority, it's towards our important, but I think there's so many other important needs. And I just want to make sure that we sort of cover our leases and actually vet this and get some more polite opinion. Without chasing our tails, we continue to say, what do we want to see? What do we want to see? I think this is great, but I'd like there to be a little bit more input so we don't end up in a risky situation with a building that we can't fill and don't have any revenue for. So I hope there's some more process. And I think our RFI would be at the very least a good way to go forward. So thanks for considering that, and thanks, President Luteri, for making this a priority.
I appreciate your comments, thanks. And I do think the RFI is a good opportunity. And I, I don't think the, the goal is not totally sports. The goal has always been a financial stream of net income for the town and economic stimulus for the businesses. So that's the goal. It's not sports, it's whatever vehicle gets us to that goal. And that was, and we'll discuss this more further, but thank you, as always, Julia, for your comments. One more?
Lisa Albigini, could you unmute, please?
No, thank you, thanks so much for recognizing Lisa Albigini, Precinct 6, 79 Quincy Ave. Couple of really quick things. First, I do want to thank Councilor DeMarco for mentioning the Quincy Ave path. I walk it nearly every day, so that was wonderful to hear. I also agree with Councilor Aiello, it makes sense to think about all of these and prioritize them as part of a capital plan. So thank you both for that. Secondly, I am also a proud Italian-American, but I'm a little disappointed we won't be able to fly the, a flag recognizing Indigenous Peoples' Day when it is celebrated. I really hope it will be on our website, and we'll find other ways to celebrate that important holiday, perhaps in addition to it being there for about November. Lastly, I did want to comment also on the proposal for the RFI. I echo a number of the comments that Julia Wallace just made. I'm a little unclear, though, about where we left this idea of issuing the RFI on the sports complex without also issuing an RFI on other plans. So I was assuming we weren't moving forward with the RFI at this time. But just a couple of comments on that plan. I think we need a lot more clarity on the details of any plan. This one in my mind raises a lot of questions about the tax revenue is, parking traffic, environmental concerns, understanding that an RFI would let us know if there's interest, and then we might go after getting information about those. But I do think that there are significant enough questions about it that it seems premature to me. I also think it's important to remember that legal question that was raised and that Jacked Out often did. I would fear that we set up the town for litigation or other issues if we misrepresented the site in an RFI or an RFP. We want to know what the, what the process is for soliciting responses to it. The last time we issued an RFI on a previous idea, the marketing of that was woefully inadequate, so we really, I don't think it all represented the pot, the potential for it out there. Those are just a handful of my specific concerns. But by far, the biggest concern I have is around process, and others have spoken to this. The town has done a lot of really good work to envision what might go on the middle school site and how to reuse the property to benefit Winthrop residents and increase its tax base. And there was a tremendous amount of input from citizens. Councilor Aiello mentioned, I think there were over 250 people participated. None of those plans have been adequately tested either, as, as this one has not. But it was a very broad process with a lot of participation. I have to say, one of the most frustrating things for me is that it appears as though that work has been ignored. And it was after the town spent good money on serious planning efforts with professional planners and also took time of, the time of countless residents for it. I remember meetings at Shorettes and many feedback forums. So it's a little kind of shocking to me, obviously, that that would be ignored and we would just rush to or go to this RFI for one idea that has also been untested. I think you all know that the town went through a master planning effort, got input from the town, the planning board, and other town boards. I was actually on the town-appointed Economic Development Advisory Group and the Middle School Reuse Committee. I was also part of the Citizens, the Private Citizens Advisory Group, and participated a lot in the master planning effort. And I do think, but I'm only one of dozens and dozens of Winthrop residents who were part of that. So it seems that, it just feels like there's a kind of disregard and practically disrespect for the work and the, and the input that was provided previously. So I would really, I would urge the council to not issue an RFI now and rather to quickly get to a townwide process, you know, pull back that, those good pieces of work that were done earlier. I agree with Julia, we don't want to drag our feet, it's not like we want to, you know, be kind of twiddling our thumbs and thinking about this again years from now. But the other end of the spectrum of kind of going up quickly with an RFI on one idea that has not been vetted at all, I think is, is as damaging. So I would appreciate, you know, consideration of a broader process that does, is respectful of the work that had been done to date by many, many dozens of Winthrop residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Ju, thank you, Lisa. And just to clarify, we have not issued an RFI. We discussed it tonight briefly, we're going to discuss it at the next council meeting. There has been zero disrespect to the people that have come before and had numerous ideas. We have not had residents come before us in multiple years, many, many years, that had any further suggestions. It is not for a lack of effort. This idea that I have proposed has been vetted many times in other municipalities, has not been vetted here. And that's why an RFI will show us the interest that I know is out there. But to say that we are in any way disrespecting ideas of the past, I had ideas of the past that didn't come to fruition at all. And not for a lack of effort. Councilor Aiello mentioned hotel, we've mentioned housing, we've mentioned colleges, community colleges, regular colleges trying to build annexes here. We've mentioned trying to get hotels. We've tried to get micro units from tech companies to come in here. It has not been from a lack of effort. And again, the goal has always been, unless it's changed without my knowledge, the goal has always been to provide a, a net revenue stream for the town. the town and to provide an economic stimulus. I've put 10 months into this so far, I'm not saying this is it, but this is an idea that's the only one I've heard in the last five years brought to the council in any kind of form, but, but the main answer to your question is, for your not to, not to concern, we have not issued an RFI as of this point. Any other?
I appreciate that.
Thank you, Lisa.
Thank you very much.
Any other public comments? Seeing none, again, I am holding a coffee hour tomorrow night to discuss middle school and firehouse at 6 o'clock at the Lyceum Room. Counselor Honan?
No, nothing.
Counselor Fusillo?
Nothing.
Counselor Munson?
I wanted to just give a quick shout out to someone that passed away recently. He kind of embodied what I think Winthrop is. He was, well, he was my son's best friend's grandfather, and he was a gentleman, he was sweet, he was an athlete, he was a family man, he was loyal, he was a good man. And he passed away suddenly, I mean, he was, he had lived a good life, so no one can expect more than he got, but it came quickly, and I just wanted to give a shout out to Felix Albano.
Thank you. Counselor Belcher?
Nothing.
Counselor DeMarco?
Yeah, Kurt, I'll talk with you offline, I agree with a lot of what you said, so I want to talk to you later. Getting back to your point, it's, I think it's very important to acknowledge that September 11th, the anniversary of September 11th passed, and a lot of people know that we lost 3,000 lives on that day, but to your point, a lot of people don't know that more people have died from 9/11-related illness since that time than actually died on that day. So, I mean, his, his point really, really hits home. And then finally, as I was saying earlier, wanted to wish the Jewish community a Happy New Year, Rosh Hashanah, and Yom Kippur is coming up, so just wanted to acknowledge that.
Thank you very much for that. Counselor Ayala?
And then for me.
Counselor Flackhart?
I wanted to commend the Winthrop Police Department Citizens Police Academy to everybody's consideration. Several of us on the council have done this, and there are certainly a lot of people in town that have done it. It is really a valuable experience and very enjoyable, and you do get to meet a lot of people, but more than that, you learn a lot about this town, it's really worth doing. If you're interested, contact Lieutenant Rogers at the Police Department, it's really worth considering for all of the counselors as well.
It is, and Lieutenant Rogers does an incredible job.
He does.
Unbelievable job. Just want to congratulate Tony's daughter on a wedding this weekend and hope all goes well. Seeing for a motion of adjournment? Motion by Counselor Belcher?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Counselor DeMarco, Munson, Flackhart, Ayala. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Always no, the ayes have it.